So, good evening, everyone. I want to thank everyone for getting on tonight. I know we got so much going on being there with shelter in place and so much is happening right now, but I do appreciate everyone that could make it to come out tonight. So what this workshop is basically for, we want to have an informational piece to kind of open the final acceptance of ESG program that the city implemented to set us in a more inefficient position going forward. So I know we have some freshman council people on and there was a lot of information that happened that everyone wasn't around for. So before we sign off on everything and this goes on in the future and people may come and ask you questions that you have no idea about. So it's, you know, it's important that we all know. I know when I first came on the council, then President Don, President Borlinski, connected me with Dan Legler and he kind of gave me the rundown of what was going on. So it's only right that we, you know, extend that to everyone else. So everyone has an idea of what exactly this program is and how it does. So I want to turn it over to Todd Anderson and his team so they can kind of give us the information that goes with this. And Caleb, could you mute everyone while Todd's speaking? So, so you can speak.
Well, good evening. Appreciate your time and just so we, you know, from our right foot here, Energy Systems Group is a company that runs energy efficiency projects for all kinds of different municipalities, government entities, school systems and the like throughout the state of Indiana and almost all over the United States. We do a bunch of federal work as well. So it's not only public works groups, but also the federal portions of our government that we do work for as well. So large projects throughout the United States. So your particular project, I'm going to turn this over to Dan to just go over the background and then what the objectives were for the project and then I'll go through the entire scope work from there. So Dan, floor is yours.
So I'll just add to what Todd said. When you think about what ESG does, we do energy and infrastructure related projects that, and while we're analyzing the organization, we come up with energy and operational savings that can help offset the cost of the project. So when we started our project, this relationship really started back in June of 2016 and Michigan City began an initiative to address energy consumption and infrastructure related assets. So we analyzed over 50 buildings in the city to determine what their conditions were and look at what needed to be done. There was a lot of input from department heads throughout the city that helped us understand what those challenges were that they had to overcome. We came up with 24 different solutions throughout the city, reducing energy and operational expenses significantly over the next 20 to 30 years. Those different solutions that we came up with, we offered to the city and the city, along with city council, had an opportunity to vet those, determine which ones they wanted to do, which ones they did not want to do. And ultimately, we came up with a scope and that scope turned into a contract that the city then entered in with ESG. At the same time, the city then decided to use Bank of America. We brought Bank of America in as we get nothing for this. It's just one of several different banks that have a different appetite for doing, committing dollars to these types of projects and giving the city an opportunity to have a relationship direct with the bank to help finance this. And by doing that, basically, the city was able to then take the resources that they had from a variety of different areas in the city from revenue and riverboat and then use those resources then to do other projects within the city depending upon what the demand was. So in essence, the objective was designed, the project was designed to reduce costs, upgrade aging assets that hadn't been addressed in the city to improve comfort in a variety of different city assets. And then the project annual debt service was to be offset with energy and operational savings, thereby conserving capital funds from other resources within the city for other city projects. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Todd and he's going to talk a little bit more about the specific projects that we did. The total project amount was just over $4.2 million that we had a solar addition that was added in there that got it to the 4.2 million and it was a citywide project. So at this point, you guys have not signed off on the final acceptance of the project yet. DLZ was retained by the city as their engineering consultant to oversee ESG and not only the technical side of what we were doing, but to make sure that the project was installed properly and they okayed the various solutions that went in place. So right now, the only thing that's left is that part of the negotiation was that the city held retainage here of, it's just over $200,000, I believe, that is sitting in an escrow account at Bank of America. Up to this point, ESG has been paid on substantial completion of the project for everything with the exception of that final amount that DLZ has okayed, that we have done our due diligence to get it done. And that's basically where we stand right now. So Todd, I'll hand it over to you unless anybody has any question.
Okay. So if there are any questions, just go ahead and please raise your hand or, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question. If you have any calculations on how much greenhouse gas savings these projects add up to, I know you're looking at cost, but our sustainability commission has a cohort with IU and we're interested in looking at greenhouse gas reduction.
Absolutely. We have those calculations and Todd, I think that Kitty put all that together. It's not in the actual document that we submitted to them, but it is available and we can, in fact, I can tell you, the environmental benefits here, here, I just happen to have it with me. The project's going to save over 3.9 billion BTUs, 868 metric tons of CO2 and carbon dioxide equivalent to either 159 cars coming off the road or planting the equivalent of 223 acres of trees. Now, we can get all that information to you at the end of this meeting, just so you'll have it for the sustainability committee.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. So to move into the total scope, so scope covered a wide range of different, different projects within the city. A lot of lighting moved over from either fluorescent or incandescent or other like high bay sodium type fixtures over to LED. And then we had HVAC renovations on several locations and then also we did some miscellaneous work with vehicle tracking system. And at the zoo, we replaced some cameras and speakers at that location and at central maintenance, we did some roofing and the solar. So we'll go through each of these. So on the lighting.
Don't forget the sports lighting too, John.
On lighting, so we touched the streetlights up and down Michigan Boulevard, down in, oh, I just lost the name of the, Dan, what was the name of the little district we did?
It escapes me. I'm sorry.
Yeah, just kind of down off Pine and.
Elston Grove.
Elston Grove, thank you.
Yeah, Elston Grove, historic, historic district.
Yes. So a lot of the street lighting there was updated to LED. Sports lighting wise, at Patriot Park, we took down all the existing sports lighting at those fields and updated those to LED with controls that are much more easy to use. And then also at Pullman Park, at the skate park, we took down the existing lighting there and put in the same type of lighting that we did at Patriot Park. Senior Center, so the entire building inside and out was renovated to LED lighting. And then in the parking lot itself, we had made arrangements with citizens, with NIPSCO to remove, there were five lights in that particular parking lot that we took out. That parking lot was overlit, so to reduce the cost to the city there. Similar to Senior Center at Kruger Hall, Central Maintenance, Central Services, Barker Mansion, the golf course, the airport and at the zoo, all those locations were updated to LED lighting. So for the HVAC portion, we touched four different locations. To a lesser extent, at City Hall, all we did was provide the thermostat covers to be installed to prevent people from adjusting their thermostats individually at City Hall. At Senior Center, it was a complete renovation. So the existing VA, not, it was not VAV, it was BFD system was pulled out and new VAV system was installed with hot water for reheat on, in the facility. So that enabled the facility to maintain temperatures better and knew that there was a lot of complaints at that location and a lot of repair costs that were going into that existing system at the senior center. So it's a brand new system there. Kruger Hall, we also replaced the two air handling units and condensing units on the outside of the building. And at Park Maintenance, we updated that air handling system to include air conditioning as well at that location. So that was the HVAC portion of our work. Any questions there?
Todd?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Don Perblinsky. Yeah, I just want to make comment to the, to the new council members and maybe the other ones that they don't remember. I know it doesn't sound like a big deal, but by putting those covers on the thermostats at City Hall, I think we calculated out that if we keep the temperature at a steady, try to keep it at a steady 69, 70 degrees, instead of everybody adjusting their own thermostat, that we could save approximately $5,000 a year just at City Hall on heat. So that's why that was done. Go ahead.
And moving on to more of the miscellaneous stuff, so at Central Maintenance, that existing roof system had a few leaks in it. And so what we did there was essentially add to the top of the existing roof. So we put the insulation down and then covered it with a new TPO roofing system that increased the efficiency or the R value of that roof significantly. At the zoo, like I said, we did replace security cameras within the retail space and at the concession stand and the train booth so that any place that we had money changing hands that there was security system in place or cameras there in place for them. And then the existing speaker system was working intermittently. So we replaced that so that broadcasts could be made on a consistent basis. And then on the fleet maintenance, our management system, so we installed tracking systems on several different department locations within the city, mainly street department, parks, the airport, so the inspectors, the building inspectors, and there were a couple of other departments that we touched. Places we did not touch was Police Department and Utility Department. They declined those tracking systems. And so that enables, the tracking system enables the city to maintain their fleet in a more easily. So the system will tell them when oil changes need to be made and send the driver notices on when those things need to be scheduled. So we keep up on the maintenance of the vehicles and also we'll track the vehicles so that if somebody's misusing a vehicle, obviously those can be tracked. And then the other portion of this was our solar installation. So we did four different solar sites. At Police Department, it was a 505, 52.8 kilowatt system. Police Department, 43.2 and Patriot Park, 28 and Senior Center, 100.8. So that will offset a lot of the costs for electricity at those locations. And then for our savings total on the project, so we anticipate that combined savings escalated over 3% per year over 18 years, that our guaranteed savings was $5,840,154. So per year on energy savings, that comes down to $180,485. Operational savings at $71,615. And then their cost avoidance replacement at Senior Center was a one-time $70,000. So that brings it up to that 5.8 million. And then we also were able to get rebates and incentives from NIPSCO in the amount of $79,328 that directly went to Michigan City. And any questions there?
I have a question. So I know this is just recently completed, but do we have any data on the savings as it's currently not projected, but actual savings?
Hi, Todd, why don't you let me answer a little bit here on this. The way that the contract works, the first year audit, you guys rolled into the contract price. So one year from final acceptance, which is we're there now, we'll come back in and do an analysis of the energy and operational savings and present it to whoever the city wants us to present it to at that time. So we're looking at, our obligation is within 90 days of final acceptance of a year, we have to report back to you what the savings actually was. So in this particular case, if you were to approve the final payment and at the end of April, then in April of 2021, we have 90 days from that point to come back in, analyze, right now, we have access to your NIPSCO bills and we can trend all that so that when we come back a year from now, if everything gets approved, we can then present that to council, whomever you want us to present it to.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Go ahead, Todd, I'm sorry.
This is Michael Mack, Councilman for the third ward. The question, part of that answer you just gave about trending the data. So my question would be, in comparison to the savings, is the comparison static as to what we're doing this year to 18 years from now? You know, like what we're spending right now as if technology and everything else, I hope I'm getting my question right, but when you're making a comparison of the savings, is it from this year, just flat out dollars, what we're spending to what we projected would be spending? Or is it something like technological advancements and, you know, things that would happen? We wouldn't be spending an exact, all of those things are going to change to some degree over the course of 18 years, for sure.
Right, right. Well, let me, let me answer that for you. Whenever we do these projects, we got to start with a baseline, okay?
Yes.
So I'm trying to, Todd, I'm not sure what the baseline year was, if it was, I have to look back at my notes that I'm traveling right now to know what that is. But we look at the baseline for each and every building that was involved with the project for a given year. So if that year happened to be 2017 or 2018, then that's the baseline year that we're comparing everything to. So then basically, we're looking at the BTU reductions, the kilowatt hour reductions in each of those areas, the aggregate of which becomes the total.
I got you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, okay. And then the one thing you got to keep in mind here is that, and this was part of discussions and negotiations along the line, you used the word static. Utilities are not static. From year to year, you can estimate what the escalation is going to be from year to year. You can look at a trend over 20 years and if you average it, you can come out on the average, utilities go up 5, 6%. In this particular case, we wanted to be conservative. So in all the calculations, we estimated 3% escalation in everything from year to year.
I guess my question would be, the escalation in cost to the utilities is one thing, but the efficiency at that time would probably add a decrease. It just seems complicated to me and I just was curious. Unless it was a dollar, dollar value, like you said, now that dollar value is difficult, I can see it being static, but over the course of time, there's, this is, it becomes, it's complicated, I might not have it right. I'm happy with the answer, Dale, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, okay, no problem, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? So I guess in summary here, we, you know, the benefits are obviously reduced energy and operational expenses. The movement of the need to modernize the city further on down the road, we've accomplished that task on several locations. A lot of the city uses capital in other locations for other work that we weren't involved in. And then it's a sustainable project. We guarantee this for 18 year period. So the city's not at risk for, for the guaranteed savings that we quoted. And really, the last item that came out on here, it was their partner were meeting conscious items. So we've closed out everything on the project. We have substantial completion for each of the different areas within the project and just want to finalize and get that, that final acceptance signed.
Todd, this is Jim Meyer.
Hi, Jim.
Has all of the documentation, starting the baseline, been provided to the clerk? And what I'm getting to is, as you know, under exhibit B of the contract, methodology for how to measure the amount of usage and/or savings in regards to this project. And sometimes it's agreed to ahead of time, sometimes it's measured and whatever. But, and I don't recall off the top of my head for each one of these projects what they all were, but it's listed in exhibit B. I just wanted to make sure, I know that the manuals have been delivered, all the construction is finished, everything is done. Just want to make sure that everything has been done in reference to, you know, establishing the baseline against which the measurements in a year will be taken to verify the savings.
That, I believe it's 90 days after final completion, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I just thought maybe you were moving ahead anyway, you know, because everything's done except the signing of a piece of paper.
Well, once final acceptance happens, that starts that 90 day period.
Okay.
So that, that will be delivered 90 days after substantial completion or the final acceptance, excuse me.
That's fine. I agree that that's within the contract, that it's not maybe you guys gotten it done earlier so you wouldn't have to be around.
No, no. This coronavirus has prevented us from doing some things.
Okay.
I have a question. Tracy Thomas for the fifth ward. In regards to the contract, you said that it was implemented in 2016 and is 18 years? In regards to the contract, you said that it was implemented in 2016 and is 18 years?
No. It was signed in 2018.
Okay.
We started our, our initial research with the city in 2016.
Okay. And the duration of the contract is for how many years?
Guaranteed savings of 18 years.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions for? No, having no other questions. Todd, is there anything you want to end with?
No, I'm in good shape. I appreciate your time and it's been good working with the city. We've, we've enjoyed the process.
Sean?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, because when you asked if there was any other questions, I was looking and I was muted. So just a couple of comments. And Dan and Todd, I want to thank you guys on behalf of myself, being the Councilman and the Council President at the time to sign this contract and get it going. And I want to thank ESG and all the professionalism, the attentiveness, the responsiveness that you guys have shown. The professionalism and the cooperation to look at things, to discuss things, to investigate things that possibly we had questions about. And I just want to think that you guys did a fantastic job. And I know, Todd, that there's one more project sitting out there and chances are we're not going to be able to do it this year. But just for the other council members that are listening, is that down at the park, Washington Park, the old band shell, not the new one, but the old band shell, the lights and the lights that go around it, half of them are burned out and half of them are not energy efficient. So I know that Todd, I think it was January, yeah, January, you came, you were in town and we went down and looked at them. And we got a price, I know, to, to change those out. And it won't be, it won't be cheap, but I think in the long run, from the energy efficiency and from the the looking and the beautification of that band shell, which is a part of Michigan City, part of the history of Michigan City. When that, when that project ever comes up here, that I think that the council should give it a, an approval to, to get that done. But anyway, going back, just want to thank you, Todd and Dan, for, like I said, all your hard work and effort and professionalism. And I want to thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Hey, hey, Don. Don, it's Dan. I want to thank, it's been a pleasure working with everybody. We enjoyed the time together and I want to, this is on behalf of all of ESG and really for the benefit of the council and everybody on the call. You know, when we do these things, it's not, we do this and we're done. You know, our process is one that we want to remain your energy partner and your energy consultant. And, and there's lots of things that we looked at that we didn't do. And there's one thing in particular that there's been discussion about, but with everything that's happened with this virus and finances and everything at this point, I, I struggled with whether or not to even mention this, but I just want everybody to know. There's been some thought about looking at the, the dump that, it's the closed landfill that's close to the sanitary district. And there's been several projects that have been done in other parts of Indiana to do solar arrays on those types of closed landfills. And there hasn't, we did some very, very high level calculations and had some high level discussions. We're not ready to talk about that now because you guys are going through a variety of different things, but at some point, and it may be a year, it might be worth having another discussion about how you can utilize that because it can't be used for many things. But other parts of Indiana have closed landfills and built solar arrays on them to take advantage of the power that can be generated. So I just want to let everybody know that and we'd be willing to have those discussions at a later date, whenever that.
This is Jim for the council members, that's the We Think site he's talking about. And the other thing I would want to say at this point, since everybody's still on, is that in reference to the bank, the reason Bank of America was chosen is because they actually have a separate division related to lending money for environmental improvement project. And we did a request for quotes for interest rates and their interest rate was over a half a point lower than anybody else, including Horizon and Sentier and, you know, the typical ones. So there was money saved by using that. The only other thing I want to mention is that the project is guaranteed savings. It's not all a 100% energy savings. There are other savings that were mentioned, for instance, by Todd and the different avoidance of later expenditures. Obviously putting tracking on vehicles doesn't save energy. All of this is done pursuant to a chapter in the Indiana code that has a lot of laws, rules and regulations in it about how these things are to be done. And in essence, what it says is you can, as long as you can calculate realistically savings, you can use that amount of a calculated savings to fund, you know, to determine how much you can spend on various projects. You know, including vehicle tracking and the roof, new roof, which is not really going to be a, you're not going to get a return on investment from the energy savings under roof, let's put it that way. But anyway, it was all done pursuant to the chapter in the Indiana code, which is IC 36-1-12.5, if anybody wants to check it.
Very good, Jim, very good, Jim, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Tracy?
I'm just curious. Councilman Chris Balinski, you mentioned that this contract, was this approved by council or mayor?
No, this was voted on by the city council.
Oh, okay.
It was presented to us by Dan Ledler and presented to us by the mayor. And the city council voted on this project.
Okay.
Yeah, the Indiana law, I cited to you, requires that the fiscal body approve the contract. It's the only contract that I'm aware of in reference, other than my own, that the city council actually votes on for a second council or a second class city. But the statute requires that the council is the fiscal body and you are the fiscal body.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions or comments?
Dan, can you?
I'm, you know what, I, I, I'm sorry, I'm not real good with Zoom here.
No, that's fine, that's fine. It just seemed like that was an on cue response.
Make that turn and have file.
It was, it was not me, that was not me, that was memory.
Yeah, definitely want to thank everyone for coming out and being involved. You guys asked some great questions. So now we have a little more information going forward in case, you know, the questions are posed to us as far as what, what this program is and what we'll be saving going forward. And I definitely want to thank Todd and his team for coming available. I gave him a call and he right away got it on his schedule so we could get this out the way. And that final acceptance letter, that'll be taken care of in the morning and you guys could proceed with the rest of it. So thank you, everybody, and good night.
All right, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Stay safe.
Thank you.